I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for running late. We have a little divorce meeting. Today is December 2nd, 2013. The time is 7:15 PM and a regular meeting begins with 10:00. Council has called order. Time to question all cell phones. If there's any other elected advice, it can be silenced. Go call Rachel.
Blake.
Here.
Len.
Here.
There.
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 James.
Here.
Need to approve this regular meeting, number 14, 2013. Do you see any additions or corrections, counsel? If not, there are two motions to approve the minutes. So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. If I might, counsel, I would like to request a change in the agenda to redo the sequence of events. I'd like to put Stacy. Would you like to, would you bring the dog in for the council meeting?
Okay.
Bring his toy with him too. Stacy, would you, well, let's go ahead and kick one goal with Sergeant Robert Duck. Director Duckworth of the EMA tonight. And first, and then I would like to put Stacy Chastey, the K-9, behind Robert Duckworth and insurance. So I'm here to propose to approve that change. So move.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote same side.
Good evening. Appreciate your flexibility there with the agenda and try to make it to three different spots in an hour and a half tonight, so. I brought some aid after here, a little bit of a cough lube out. You guys can be kind of familiar with it. My purpose here tonight is to kind of give you an update of what we're doing with the emergency management for the last year. Daryl got to make his sense of this during the four work meetings. But basically, we kind of want to go through with the city councils and county councils and commissioners once a year, let them know what kind of updates have been done. And one of the first things we did last year was we established a community emergency response team, and that's kind of the flyer that I handed out to you of what is CERT and what is it able to do. And I kind of thought about this between the meetings and explained what's the best way that we can use community emergency response teams is if you have an event like they had in Kokomo two weeks ago, how are you going to manage all those areas with all those volunteers that come in? And if we have a group such as the community emergency response teams that have been trained in NIMs on how we manage groups of people in an emergency management setting, we don't have enough policemen and enough firemen and enough deputies. They're all doing their jobs as it is. But these folks can step in as trained personnel to help oversee that group and make sure that that information gets coordinated back. And most importantly, when it comes to, and the mayor's experienced this, when it comes to making up your 25% or any federal aid that comes through, documenting those hours becomes extremely important. So these groups are trained to assist us with that. Our first group assisted us at the Fall Festival during the parade route. And I don't know if any of you know it or not, but we had three significant events that happened during the middle of the parade. We had a gentleman go down at the corner of Washington and Broadway under cardiac arrest. People were doing CPR. He survived and had no deficits from that. At the end of that, we had a lady that fell down the stage and had to receive medical treatment. And then a guy, a gentleman, tripped over a parking curb at the main source parking lot and fell over his nose, all within a matter of about 14 minutes of each other. And our community emergency response team let the emergency responders take care of those folks, and they stepped right in and continued to take care of traffic. And the parade never stopped. So from a community standpoint, they knew stuff that was, stuff was going on, but it didn't have an effect on them because the regular activity that they were doing at 10 was able to go on. And that's one of the areas that we can use our community emergency response teams. The other thing we did is we completed Emergency Operations Center training for County and City Communications Center. We've always talked about an Emergency Operations Center, but what it actually does. We had some folks that participated in a three-day training with us in how we manage these types of incidents and what we're trying to do, and that emergencies don't stop during disasters. We need them to continue to take care of the regular emergencies that are coming in, but if it's something dealing with tornado cleanup or housing structures or those things, that they can funnel those back to that Emergency Operations Center and how those things flow. During the tornado outbreak two weeks ago, we had our Emergency Operations Center open here in the county. We had coordinated through the police chief and the fire chief and the mayor's office, let them know that it was going to be open in the event that if we are the ones to become affected, this is where we're all going to huddle up at. This is where the huddle's going to be, and everybody's going to be working in one spot. And that's something that we learned from the 11, or 2011 tornadoes is we have to have somewhere ahead of time. The time of the event is not the time to plan. You have to do that planning ahead of time. We spent the last two years doing that. And one of the things that we've revised with that is what's called a CEMP or Comprehensive Emergency Plan. And one of the things that the mayor tasked me with as the director was, give me something back that I can give to our staff that they can use. Anybody can take a three-inch binder and flip through it and try and find something in there, but we've narrowed that down to about 22 pages, and it's specific to incidents. So if there's a tornado, this is what fire is responsible for, this is what EMS, Public Works, and it's a checklist to make sure we're hitting all those critical things in the first 24 hours before we get a chance to regroup, reset, how badly we hurt, and what do we need to do to fix it, to make sure we don't miss any of those things. So that's been completed. One of the things that we were able to pick up and is nearing completion with the assistance of the Greensburg Fire Department is in December of last year, we acquired the old Kokomo. The library replaced their Bluebird Mini. It's been repainted and resurfaced. It's functional now, but it's still getting some items added to it. And the reason why it's taken so long is because in the last two months, we've been awarded one grant for $10,000 and another grant for $5,000 to equip that unit that's not coming from city or county dollars. So we waited to make those other investments, hoping for these opportunities to come along. And one of the comments that I have with Rick Navi and one of the county commissioners is there's no such thing as free money. It was somebody's money to start with. Somebody put the money in a pot, but the best thing that we can do is to try our darndest to get it back into the city and the county to bring it back there. So over the last year, we worked with, through Homeland Security, the school safety grants that went out to the city and county schools. They're all run through the same grant system that Emergency Management applies your grants for. So we spent about 10 to 12 hours with county schools and 10 to 12 hours with the city schools, helping them draft their proposals for these grants. And that work paid off. We received full $50,000 funding for each group, so a total of $100,000. And it was a really good thing for Greensburg Community Schools because they already had an SRO in place, and now the county's going to be able to mirror that same program. But the county, the city schools were able to receive $50,000 worth of equipment. So we weren't expecting to get that. We were going in and hoping for half, that there's going to be a lot of rewards made for that. But I think that the work that we've done with the community school safety group and those proposals put together. So right now, Emergency Management in Decatur County, in total, is, we're operating in the black. We cost total about $32,000 to run, and this year, in grants, we've brought in $118,000. So we're not operating as negative. We've been very fortunate to see these different opportunities that are out there. And our CERT team has worked to get a trailer together through an RMC grant and then equip that through a community foundation grant. So everything that we've put out in salary dollars that's not been covered in grant, we've been able to recover in Equipment Plus. So we're very happy about that turnaround. And I think that the last thing that we've done is we've done some after-action reviews from some incidents that happened last year with plane crashes that happened a year ago this week. We learned some lessons from it on how we can do some things, and that's what has driven some of the initiative behind the Mobile Command Center. And then we also purchased at the Campbell Level A four-wheel drive Kubota UTV that's all-weather and it's enclosed. So that way, when we need to get out in a specific instance, we had it at the Fall Festival, we had it at Crackaway Days. We're trying to rotate that around to different communities as a planning event. If you know ahead of time that you're going to have five or 7,000 people in an area, we can pre-stage some equipment. We did the same thing for the basketball sections. We don't expect for anything to be happening. We don't expect for anything bad to happen. But if we can have those things pre-planned and pre-staged, that's what we need to be done. So we worked with the different evacuation routes for both of those events because in the event you need to evacuate, that's not for your time to decide which way this section's going or for those folks to figure that out. And there's some things that we didn't do before, we're doing differently. So it's kind of a snapshot of where we're at with Emergency Management this year, with what we've developed and what we've put together. We were very fortunate. Last year, during the Holden tornado, when they had their event, we had our Emergency Operations Center open, and we were able to send them a. So that was a lot different than where we were in '11 when we were trying to figure out which way was up and which way was down while we were trying to put things back together. One of the areas that we had concern with after the '11 tornado was closing the roadways and controlling access. We don't have enough police to do it. But now we know we have the resources to get barricades from outside of the city, outside of the county, and then we can use the community emergency response team folks to stand by those barricades. Sometimes people will get pushy because they want to get through certain areas, but a lot of times, as long as somebody's standing by that barricade, they're not going to get out and move it to drive through us. And those resources are out there to help us. So that's where we've come in the last year. We'll be moving forward for next year.
Was it Ron? Six up some more. Yes, six up some more. We have learned a lot from things happening to the past. The tornado being the first thing, see where our weaknesses are. And then the plane crashes, as Ron said, and you know, we are doing a lot better than we have done prior to the tornado. Obviously, this has to go to a worse meeting. A lot of communities are wanting to duplicate what we're doing. Leadership, Director Assistant Robert Brown, he had made great strides here in county. You know, Sasa County, the city is part of county. We have been about to the arena. But no, it's a great move with the county and the city. We continue to grow and improve every year, and I said, we have. Such as we get points, it's going to be points that they take in from late hours, days hours. I got to give the man, the Director Assistant Director, they learn if they can. See, we give them much growth if they can handle it.
The last thing that I have is just to thank you to the city, especially with the work that the Fire Department has done with us. There's a couple of folks that have taken a very energetic role in helping us refurbish the Kokomo building and Mobile Command Center. And they've done it in a very energetic manner. You can tell that it's something that they want to do, something they want to be involved in and help to the greater product, so for that. So if I need some parts, you know where we get some parts. I think I gave one of these to everybody but you, mayor, and that's all I have for you.
Thank you very much, mayor. Appreciate it. Any questions for Ron?
It was better the second time around.
What's that? It was better the second?
Okay.
Question. How many CERT teams do you have? We have one CERT team. Is it multiple people or CERT teams in different parts of the counties?
We have one functioning CERT team right now, and that's in parts where it's like, and they have about eight folks. We are doing a training here at the end of the week, 24 hours, and we'll have about 20 people there. And a portion of that is going to be folks from here in the city, and then they will work in. Yeah, but we will have one countywide team. It's basically the structure that I listed up. Nationally, at the national level, they follow each area with their own team, but those are the areas that have 250,000 people. So in an area that has 25,000 people, we're going to have one countywide team, and then the Greensburg Pod, the Clutchwood Pod, and then hopefully the Westport Pod.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Stacy? Chief Chastey?
The other thing I had on the agenda was to update the council on the K-9 program progress we had this year. And I wanted to let Jordan here take care of that. I should say Jordan Craig, K-9's department. I'm sure everybody has one on and.
Craig.
Pre-year.
Craig, get your big first.
This year, again, we started in May is when we certified. And I guess one way to judge the success for, since we've been doing narcotics mainly, since then, we've started, we're in the forfeiture process with about $30,000 cash. We've probably seized roughly, you know, $35,000 worth of narcotics. Not to mention several vehicles that we've assisted in, you know, the forfeiture process, I guess, you know, with the K-9 because its unique ability to, I guess, further in investigation. So that's been since May, you know, the K-9 program's already paid for itself a couple of times. Along with that, we've been looking at beginning a dual-purpose K-9 program, which basically that'll be a beginning train for tracking and apprehension as well. And there's several benefits to that, you know, whether you're tracking a felon or, you know, somebody along those lines, or, you know, it's a little kid or elderly person, which is, you know, pretty common. We could commonly use to track somebody for many purposes. I mean, I've kind of been keeping an tally in my head, how many times could we track somebody? And it's, you know, several times a month. Or people are calling me saying, do you guys track an apprehend? And they're like, no, not right now. And that's not, it's not people from some other county calling us. It's because some guy just bailed out. He, you know, just committed a violent felony or, you know, whatever the case may be, and they want to track an apprehending person. Every time I've been called so far and asked about it, it's because people didn't know, and it's not some other county. It's people running in Greensburg, and they're dumping down in one of your guys' backyard or something like that. That's where we're at now. It's been real successful. I've been able to get, raised a lot of money through grants in our solicitation letters. You know, the program's paid for itself in that aspect, hundreds generous Walmart, not to mention the community with the letters I sent out to. The vehicle once, you know, I, those donated from Columbus Police Department. I talked to their goddess since Crown Records had been phased out. And we were able to get that. I just got a ballistic vest for Krieger. You know, that's, they're fairly expensive. You know, but looking around $1,000, that's being donated through a company out of Massachusetts. Young and Denver, that we do the dual-purpose K-9. It's nice to offer him some protection too, you know, going out. Anybody have any questions for me, I guess?
When will the training start?
He tracks now. I've been working on his tracking. You know, it's kind of a crawl, walk, run, as they say. He could be, he could be certified, I would say, I would say by February, if not sooner. I trained with Columbus Police Department. I trained with some police departments over by Dayton, Ohio. And, you know, everybody's pushing. He's a quick learning dog, you know, definitely. So it kind of makes things easy for me. I know I talked with the, earlier about our certification. Indiana has no standard for certifying K-9. You know, Joe Bloat can go get his dog and take him out there and say what he wants, and you're probably just doing nothing to mitigate himself for a liability of some sort of other city or, you know, the city. But I've taken the Ohio certification. That's, we certify through Ohio. There's not many states that do our certification, so it's kind of, you know, the wheels are turning on Indiana actually having a mandatory certification. We also go through North American Police Work Dog Association. We certified them this past September. So, you know, there's not a, there's no, we are, we are at the top standard. So as far as, you know, if you're wondering about credentials or anything like that, you can go online and Google any of those and do some research. But, you know, it's been, some dogs get a whole career, some handlers get several dogs without getting seizures and stuff like that. And I think we're kind of, we're just kind of, you know, with just starting the year, I think things went exceptionally well. I don't want to say it's going to be like this every year, but you know.
Do you have, what, around $31,000 in the system or eventually they return to the BD?
Eventually it will come to the police department, you know, after there's, of course, there's procedure, you know, it's not just your gilly. It doesn't work like that. But, you know, eventually it'll come back, and I'm sure it won't be the first or the last time that, you know, it happens. It's the benefits of having a K-9. You know, that's why when I, when I was pitching the program initially, I was, you know, this is, it is a good idea. If you get the right people doing it and you get the right, you know, the right support from the city and, you know, your chain command, it can be a hugely beneficial system. I mean, there's an I-74 runs through here. It's the most, you know, from guys that do interdiction, I've talked to, it's one of the most underworked, you know, interstates that run through Indiana, and a lot of, a lot of people are getting off the 65 loop and they're coming down through here. And there's, there's every single day, I promise you, there's drugs and money going down that road to, you know, that could be forfeited through proper investigation. Just, you know, keep on learning every day, keep on trying. Down the road, it'd be nice to pursue that as a, then you, I know there's a lot of interdiction teams, you could call them, up around the loop in Indianapolis. And, you know, I just want to stress, you don't have to be by a big city for there to be drugs and money going down the road because we're between Chicago and Cincinnati. A lot of those successful teams, you know, they have several SUVs, several K-9s, several officers. You know, officers that their city probably wasn't planning on hiring until they seize, you know, millions of dollars over five years' pay. And now they have that, you know, it can be a, it can be a big asset for, you know, community and general.
Do we have questions for also, Greg? Thank you very much. Next item would just be an update on health insurance for 2013.
Okay.
We must have worn out well.
Got it, Sarah, you know.
I'll give you the short version.
Hey, Mark, would you like to? Back there. You want to what? Who? In the absence, Gary Murray. Yes, onwards, 2013-16, rezoning of the B-3. That's the property right behind Walmart, correct?
Yes. This one to the APC. It was approved nationally for reclamation of this board, I think, when Phil, you know, if you've got any questions in that regards. There's a map on the second page. It should be self-explanatory. It's everything from the back of Walmart to the east side of whatever the new community is called. From the west side of that, the National Park. National Park, yes. And this is a, leave at the request of the current property owner and the developer of Cincinnati, Ohio.
Glenn, being frank, Mr. President, if you'd like to go ahead.
This was started earlier this last year, this past, during this past year when Menards was involved in this, and suddenly Menards said, well, we're not sure we're going to build, and it stopped. So we halted the process at that point in time, as we recommended then as well. The owner of the property still thinks, I think that he can market it better as a B-3, and was marketed, still thinks he can market it to Menards. But whether or not Menards goes in there or any other business, a B-3 seems to be a better zoning fit from this standpoint of the non-commissioned. It's rather the light industrial that's between a B-3 and a R4, keeping it B3, B3, then the R4, then more business, and then the light industrial. So it just seems to be a better fit, no matter what commercial enterprise goes in there. Commission recommended that we do change the facility. And I don't know if you have other questions, but Blake can add. It seems to be the right thing to do.
Look, it's the same zoning as what's currently for all of the retail space just to the west of it. You know, the Walmart complex all the way out, everything on the other side of the road, west of the residential, that's all B3. And it's just the fact that you've got the residential facility there to the side, probably a lot more conducive to them for the noise than you don't have nearly heavy truck traffic than you have industrial side.
Initially, that was I-1 because where Asko place was I-1, and it was I-1 from around from the industrial park. It's brought it all the way around initially, thinking that might be an attractive way to market the area. But with Walmart came and had a change, and it had, that became a B-3, the first part of it, on any reason to change that part. But once you change it with R4, it seems, it seems to be not sensible to keep it at I-1, more sensible to make it. Well, we had somebody wanting to look at it.
I echo what you said, that discussion in plain commission was to adjust, adjust what he's saying.
We'll make a motion with pass orders, 2013-16, for the rezoning. Second.
Need for discussion? Gary Nun, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Gary Nun, ask the first read. Counsel, can we do the second read?
You would have to suspend the rules. I mean, if you suspended the rules and approved it, you could do it.
I mean, everybody agrees on it, I think.
Is there a difference that we could do it?
I think it just gives him a little better.
Speaking of Gary this morning, I think the owner would kind of like to make it more attractive, marketing as possible because there's no financial amplification or money involved with the rezone. He was kind of hoping the council would go ahead and suspend the rules on all three reads tonight. Do I, or only two?
Okay. Entertaining motion, suspend the rules, for second read.
Who?
All those who've expressed, suspend, suspending the rules for second reading, say aye.
Need second.
Oh, okay. Need for discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same side. Motion passes.
Making motion if the pass orders, 2013-16, on the second read.
For discussion, Gary Nun, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Make sure you assign a copy of that and email to Gary.
Thank you. Got it, didn't you? Then we have ordinance, Donna, record. Ordinance 2013-17, and then our scouter, 2012-9, 13-6.
This ordinance is to correct a portion of 2012-9, which is 2013 salaries, and 2013-6, which is 2014 salaries under the section of Greensburg Municipal Wastewater Employees, the meter-reading, meter reader clothing allowance. I did not change that to the $500 amount that was originally changed in ordinance 2011-13. So to be compliant with this year's second pay of clothing allowance, which will be in the month of December, we need to correct this.
The event is received $5 per year per municipal council.
Yes. It's paid like in June and December. Caught this while getting ready, getting the salaries ready for 2014. I'm just reviewing my information and apologies.
Counselor, can this be done on a second read as well?
Yeah, I mean, again, presumably, suspend the rules. Hasn't been done the first year yet.
I'm jumping, yeah, I'm jumping.
Count, have any questions?
Was it listed as five hundred in the budget?
It was in the request, requested amount and then like it's, it's under.
Fine, for this year though, you're saying you want to change it for this year even?
Yes, to be compliant.
Was it proof though, was five hundred?
In the amount, it would have said three hundred and fifty dollars because it was wrong from the previous year. If that makes sense, I have the original ordinance, twenty eleven dash, twenty twelve dash five.
What does it say?
Um, five hundred dollars per year and there was no increase for twenty fourteen, it was supposed to be the same as twenty fifteen, if that makes sense.
Did you down the two thousand eleven four, two thousand twelve?
Yes.
I just didn't remember, I've been at a hundred and fifty dollars.
I, I'm, I'm thinking about a recollection that I thought that there was a change that came after the fact. You came and asked us to make a adjustment, and I don't remember the, all the circumstances, but we were reducing one thing and.
Yes, it was, yes.
Adding it here, so.
The sewer department or the water department had discontinued their clothing service, so we increased their clothing allowance. The meter readers, my whole billing office is split between water and sewer, so one of the meter readers has picked out the water and one out of sewer, but the sewer meter reader follows what the water department does.
So. We made it, we made an adjustment last year in twenty thirteen, but it was, it was not made in the original budget for twenty thirteen, is that right?
The salary ordinance reflected, I, I admitted that change that was done in twenty twelve for the salaries of twenty twelve. It's, it's just a typo basically.
So this is essentially a, a motion to correct discriminers here.
Yes.
I would move to the ordinance twenty thirteen dash seventeen on first read.
Second. Need for discussion? Gary, now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes.
Remove the standard rules.
Second. Need for discussion on that? Gary, now, all those in favor of stating the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion passes, second read, motion for second read.
Make a motion that we pass twenty thirteen dash seventeen on second read.
Second. Need for discussion? Gary, now, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, opposed, same sign. Thank you. That takes care of both those two thousand twelve dash nine and two thousand thirteen dash six. All right, the next item is, uh, we went through this in the board's meeting tonight, public, request public meetings, council. Also, we had said in two thousand fourteen, we have a question, would you like to address this form first, a request for a speech in public meetings? I know that you all know there's been a public meeting and a public hearing. You know, I, I implore the people to be able to speak, I think there needs to be some sort of organization to it, to where sometimes we can help the people with information prior to a meeting. A lot of people, they had the answers, may choose not to speak, but, uh, there, there's been occasions when it's taken up a lot, a lot of that time, actually the same thing over and over. And maybe that's, that's both presidents', uh, responsibility to shorten the discussion, the debate. We try to, all of board presidents and boards try to give the most, all respect in the world to people who want to speak. Sometimes unfortunately it doesn't work both directions, it's because elected officials are more pointy, which will be pretty disadvantageous. I think a person has a legitimate request, a concern, and if it needs a public meeting, I mean, for the people to speak, I support that. But I don't support somebody wanting to sign up just in case they may want to speak, that's happened as well. If I'm open, if, I'm sure you've all read this, if you don't agree with it, submit something to me, what you think you believe. I think this here will fit, the airport board has accepted it, the tenant board has accepted it, the board works, has approved this. We have no doors to go, but it's not saying that no one can speak, it may be a council member want to ask them more in the audience and question them, that's not a problem either. I don't think, how many times we get people who really want to speak in council, it's usually not the council meetings, or the public meetings. In the public hearing, they're expected to speak, stand up, they're willing to speak. Public meetings or, or my C code, governmental body does not have the right to speak, the right to attend the meetings, and it will not. No one will be on that, I truly am, but I think there needs to be some sort of method here that everyone is aware of what's going on. There's questions to be asked, the five days gives us a couple of days to investigate their concerns, so that we have factual answers on time, council.
The, the five day idea, I don't feel that that's horrible if somebody wants something on the agenda, you know, and they want a decision made at the meeting, but, you know, my opinion, it's a, it's a public meeting and, you know, we're elected to represent the constituents in the community and, you know, I, maybe there's a limit to how long you let people speak, but I think we've got to be able to let people speak.
How many times a meeting?
You know, I mean, I, like I said, if you give them a, a time limit, then that's their time limit to come up and speak. Unless they're speaking on something that's on the agenda, you that we're, you know, when we ask if there's public comment.
And that's been the problem too, Jamie, when a person hears something, even after the bar is spoken, and they hear something they want to rebuttal on it, they don't want to speak again.
We just have to find a tactful way, get there quickly.
I think this is a, uninviting people to the public meeting by, by having this, I think it's, it's sending out a message that you're not welcome. And I don't, that's your intention probably, not, not probably, not your intention, I'm sure, but, um, I think that's what it's saying. I've been in public meetings for close to twenty years, and I've conducted public meetings that were quite volatile topics. An auditorium room of people, as a matter of fact, when Walmart came in, uh, when some subdivisions were going in, we had things and through, Plan Commission conducted those meetings, and there were people with passionate points of view. But we were able to handle it without any real difficulties. Most of the time that we have public meetings that I've been involved with, there's rarely anybody that, that wants to speak. Occasionally there are and could do it. I haven't, I, I think this is, uh, a solution in search of a problem, and so from my perspective, I mean, you run a meeting, the mayor is charged with running these city council meetings, so if you think that's necessary to do in order for you to be able to conduct a meeting well, that's your problem. I just want to go on record that it's, this councilman does not think it's necessary. I think if we, we don't have it on the agenda for public input.
We used to.
Well, I know, but it's not on the agenda, so you don't have to do it every time, you can do it occasionally, you don't have to always do it. If this is the way you'd rather do it, I guess that's your prerogative, I just think it's a solution in search, in search of a problem. I think it's sending the wrong message to the public, uh, for their participation and their involvement in, in civic affairs. And I think it's the wrong message to be sent by the other boards as well. I think you can conduct meetings in such a way that, uh, people are invited to participate, but know that there's, there's limits, in terms of civility, as well as a matter of how it's, how it's conducted and what's, what's being said and conducted, so, um, it's your show, but if you're asking for a vote of support, I would say no. But yeah, I don't think you need my support, as I said, it's, you're in charge of running a meeting and you set the agendas, um, and if you don't want public input, you just don't put it on the agenda.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I think some recent incidents, um, just in the past several months have really kind of triggered something like this. And if we don't go with this, if this falls through or whatever, I still think there needs to be some kind of guidelines, especially when someone gets behind that podium in a public meeting and mentions someone else's name who is not here to defend themselves, they should be, they should be shut up. It's not, it's not right, it's not, uh, it's slanderous, and I think we're looking for some kind of a resolve for situations like that. And, and, and perhaps we give them a warning, if someone crosses the line, we said, that's your warning, and they do it again, then they wouldn't be invited to speak. But I, I do think there has to be some kind of structure, maybe this does go too far, I don't know, but, uh, I, I, I know the TIF meeting that we can without the town, and I, I facilitated, uh, it was really stirred up that night and it was, we had to reel it back in. But, uh, we don't want this to become a sideshow either.
And that's what was it?
That night it was.
I was embarrassed and I felt sorry, felt bad for board members.
But.
I was there, you know, I was really guilty, shoot, I, I, I wouldn't wrap it disposition, I can't make it, I can accept it, you know? I can accept it, whatever they want to say about me, but the people who are appointed by both me and the council members to the TIF and other council, don't deserve to be spoke to in a disrespectful manner, over and over. And Councilman Tebby, I'm like you, I want to hear people speak, I miss being on the agenda, public discussion, that's the last thing we always did before we adjourned the meeting, ask for a published discussion. Any questions or comments or concerns? Now I'm afraid to do that because of what, you might come up and start going off.
I think you can control that, you're, you are in charge of this meeting, or any chairperson is, and you set, as Darryl, uh, mentioned, you, you set some guidelines. And if somebody, and you set time limits, you don't allow somebody to monopolize, you know, if they want to do that, there's a street corner where they can talk to whoever they want as long as they want.
And this is kind of a different forum because we are elected officials, all of us.
Well, I mean, I, I think any public, as that, as that authority, uh, who they convene it and it's, it's, they're convening it, they're in charge of setting the tone and setting the guidelines for. So I said, I wasn't at the meeting, I understood it was, uh, not as civil as it should have been, and, but I see, I see that as an exception and not the rule. And, and, um, as I said, I, I've been in, in public meetings quite too much in the last twenty years or more, but I've been involved, you know, as a official for twenty years, and around twenty five.
I appreciate you, but I truly do, and we may do something different than this.
Well, except if you want to do it, it's, it's your prerogative to do it, I just don't think, I want, I'm just telling you that as a council member, I'm not, I'm not okay with it. But you can do it.
I know, I want your support, the people's support, the council's support and their input as well, you know, this is, we are all elected officials. And I want the people to be able to speak, I didn't want to do this meeting any different than any other meeting, but this is different than every, this, every person here is elected official and we need to listen to the people. Whether it's here in a meeting, or by telephone, or by letter, or by email, but I show you emails I get too, they're not very nice. It's just, it's just a couple, a couple of people, help the people make a lot of decisions, and they're good at that.
Can I make a point, I, I, Councilman Tebby, I think your point is well taken, I mean, you, you can run a meeting any way you want. I will say from the perspective of, of the attorney for the city, it is useful as you go back over minutes to be able to look at what someone was actually, if you just have a blanket public access, there's no set agenda to it. And I mean, I've sat through enough of your point of commission meetings, I know that if the public's going to be discussing it, there's an agenda point. So you're either stuck with the position of putting a blanket public access agenda point, or having some sort of uniform mechanized system that allows someone to get on the agenda. And I think the way you do it now is you simply say, if you want to, if you want to be on the agenda, you contact the board president, you tell them what you want to say, and I think that's fine. But when the mayor asks me my opinion on this, because I've, I've looked at this and tried to make sure that it was consistent with what Indiana law requires and allows, and I think it is. The idea behind it to me more was in the terms of if you have a, a point that you want to talk about, you should be able to enumerate what that point is. In enough, with enough time to allow for reasonable discussion. And I, I know I've only been doing this a little over a year now, I have, do not have any more near the experience that you have been, but I have been in meetings where it was required that you tabled a discussion point because the person showed up, asked for something and said, and you had to say, well, I don't know the answer to your question. That's what I think is a more pertinent aspect of this, is just an ability for you all to know what you're talking about before you go to the meeting. And I, and I agree with that, if they're wanting us to make a decision about something, if they just come in and go morning and say, and I don't have a problem in saying, hey, first we heard of it, we will get a little research, we'll get back, he come back next week, we'll put it on the agenda. But in terms of just, uh, allowing, someone's not going to know what's on the agenda five days in advance, and if someone wanted to comment on some topic that was being discussed, they'd have, we'd have to wait till the following month.
Sure.
And, and so again, I'm not talking for carte blanche and just anybody, everybody, and we're going to sit here for sixteen hours letting people, you know, that's not, that, and it hasn't been the case either. And if it ever got to that point, then I'd say, okay, maybe we do need to start putting a lot more, um, obstacle is not the right word, but, but, uh, making sure that it's a legitimate point that they're really trying to bring in it, but again, it's a matter of letting the public take part. And it's a matter of setting, of, of being able to, to conduct a meeting and setting up the, the limits that you, that you, people, before they come up, you have two minutes. And tell us, state your point, state your concern, granted, the chair has always got the last word. If somebody says something that's inaccurate or incomplete or slanderous or defamatory in any way, you can gavel them down. And we usually have police here that if somebody, if that ever happened, we got somebody that really was rowdy. But on the other hand, if there's something is said that's just not accurate or misinformation, the chair can, can correct it, correct it. But on the other hand, if there's something is said that's just not accurate or misinformation, the chair can, can correct it, correct it and not get into argument. I mean, I'm, I'm not talking about just having a dialogue with everybody all the time, it's a matter of listening. And it's, if they want to say, you got your two minutes, state your point, thank you. If we've got questions, we can question, the chair can question. And again, if there's something that's, that's out of order, chair can correct it. Person sat down, there's no more reason to, to be in dialogue or in argument or creating a back and forth. And frankly, I've been, there have been times when we've let the public be part of our discussion that shouldn't be. And I don't mean that they shouldn't be, there's a time and place for them, but we've got somebody, all of a sudden, we're talking about something, somebody out there just blurts something in without the chair even recognizing, I think that's completely out of order. Phenomenal school. So, you know, I, that's...
Suppose someone didn't send one, and it's still been up to our conference or wanted to, so they get lapped.
No, not, not we said, you know, you, you're not on the agenda, you know, the, what you...
Or they can't do rebuttal, they can't do anything if they haven't sent a paper in, you don't need to...
No, that's me asking to speak.
I don't think it would work, and it needs to be adjusted.
Well, you know, Terry, I, I even took mayor's issues off the agenda for things that came up last minute, because I didn't want to feel any different than anyone else. This won't happen, mayor's issues got to go too. And that's not fair, that's not right, that's not the right thing. I've gone that far lately. You know, I've set up with a bunch of strangers, I can run meetings just as efficient and professional as any chair. But when you come to Greensburg, Indiana, we know these people, we know most of them. The ones we do know usually are respectful, but the ones who come in in a small town that we don't, we're shocked, we still want to give them respect that they have coming, but it doesn't always work both directions. And that's my concern, so maybe the board presidents need a little education in proper meeting etiquette, what to do, what to do and how to do it.